Before we begin our meeting this evening, I would like to recognize that January is Pennsylvania's School Board or School Directors' Recognition Month. And we are going to take an opportunity to recognize our school directors for their time, dedication, and commitment to our students and schools. So in honor of the School Director Recognition Month, I personally would like to thank you for your leadership, your commitment to our students and our community, and your support to the district's mission to continually improve our educational system for our students. Our district is without a doubt better because we have you on our school board. I share my sincere thanks and appreciation to all of our board members for your work on behalf of our students, staff, and schools of the Titusville area school district. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Please join me in recognizing. And you can see that we have some treats provided for you that you can enjoy at your leisure following the meeting.
Thank you very much.
Well, I was gonna say, for you, I know you would have to have milk, and we don't have milk. So, sorry, you could dip your cookies in your water if you choose.
My water doesn't work.
I know you would enjoy them better with milk. So, next year I'll remember. Everyone else is giving water, he's getting milk.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you again.
There was no executive session. Would you join me in a moment of silence, please? Moving on to the agenda, there are no agenda revisions for this evening. Is there any public comment this evening? Moving on, let's do a review of the routine matters. In your packet, you will find the minutes of December the 4th, the reorganization meeting. Please look those over to make sure those are accurate. You will find the tax collector's report. Also, the treasures report. And board bills. Do we, since Kami is here tonight, I'm sure we have some questions for Kami. We would hate for her to go away and not have anything to do here tonight, so.
Here we go.
Yes, here we go. These are listed as real estate exoneration. What, I don't know how these work exactly.
So, the county sometimes sends us bills if there's been like a fire in a garage or some sort of change, or if they've had an appeal and, you know, had a reassessment. And we, if they've already paid their real estate taxes, we have to then issue them the credit.
Oh, I see. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then there are a lot, they're all seem to be the same, and I think it's some kind of.
Oh, I can explain that.
Yes.
So, give the first one, Lynn, just give the first number.
The first one is 111-512.
And then they start, is the difference in the cost for the PSAT. So originally, they had paid a certain amount, and then they adjusted the price, and so we're refunding that back to the individuals that paid, and that's the difference.
So, they actually adjusted the price down?
Yes.
The company did?
The college board.
College board.
And so, once those parents paid for that, then we provided the difference. I think that the difference was like 972 per family.
Okay.
Yes.
Very good.
And that was for the PSAT.
Okay. I think that's all that I have. Does anybody else have any other questions on board bills?
I will say you'll get a new one next week, because this week, we were trying to get another revised payment to get Stark out, but the bill that they had sent us was not correct. So, he wants to cut it this week, and then we'll have reports that will include that payment.
Okay, very good. Okay. Moving on to personnel, Mrs. Keebler, do you want to comment on those?
Yep, thank you. So, under Schedule A, you're gonna notice that we have three resignations. We had Michelle Simmons as a cafeteria floater, we'll talk about her in a second, but accepting the resignation from that position. Kathy Beach as our high school auditorium coordinator, I'm serving in that role for 19 years. And Brent Mader as our technology education department lead, and serving in that role for 27 and a half years. Moving on to Schedule C, support staff appointments. Cafeteria floater, Michelle Simmons, basically worked for us for one day on December 5th. So, because it was after the December 4th meeting, that's why you're seeing her appointment. She worked one day and submitted her paperwork, her timesheet, and her badge. We could not make contact with her, so we're processing her resignation on Schedule A as well. So, that's just kind of like an in and out. Also, we're appointing Stephanie Donovan to the secretary of the principal, followed by Kathy Beach's retirement, which we'll talk here about in just a second, with her effective date of March 18th. We have a few groups that are going to some professional meetings. Nancy Wright, Tom Hancock, Stephanie Ongley are going to the Special Education Conference hosted by the Pennsylvania Department of Ed. We have a large group of teachers and administrators going to the Pamily, the Middle School Association Conference in February. And then we have Bridget O'Neil and Josh Albright going to the Pashi, which is the State University System Counselor Information Day. Under Schedule H, we have several leaves of absences. I think that I jinxed myself in December when I said we didn't have very many, and now we are, we have quite a few. So, you can review those. Moving on to Schedule I, we have Kevin Vincent taking a group of students to District Jazz in Erie in the middle of February. We have Schedule J, we have a change of degree, Casey Fireisen is going from bachelor's to Then we move on to Schedule K, we have, which is supplemental appointments, we're recommending Nicole Johnson for one of the middle school assistant track positions. We still have one left open. Schedule L, retirements. I'd like to take the opportunity to recognize the three individuals who are retiring this spring. Kathy Beach, secretary of the principal at Titusville High School, has served in that role for 21 years. Kimmy Copely has served as the attendance and print shop secretary for the district for 28 years. And Brent Mader as our technology education teacher for 32 years. All three of them have been very, very instrumental within the high school and certainly will be missed very, very much. So, we just want to share that we're extremely grateful for their years of service and their capacities at the high school.
It's a lot of years for three people.
Three individuals, so, very great, very grateful. And I know it was bittersweet for some of them, we're trying to make that hard decision.
Yeah.
Schedule O, contracted bus and van drivers, we have several of those drivers coming on. And then finally, under Schedule R, we have an additional substitute coming on through ESS as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions on any of those before we move on? Moving on to tax and finance, there's a recommendation to adopt the Vanango Technology Center's 24-25 budget. And I would like to talk a little bit about that because I am the member who, along with Monica, who goes to VOTEC. And most of our meetings at VOTEC are 10 minutes long, and in December, the meeting was 40 minutes long. And it was in large part due to budget concerns. So, I think the best way to summarize that for everyone is to share with you what Pat Adams, who is the financial officer, wrote as far as minutes, because it does explain the budget and why it's a little different this year. He wrote, "Mr. Adams began a discussion regarding the 24-25 budget. He indicated that he and Mario had already met with each district superintendent and business manager. He commented that this budget did not have the line item for the capital lease, that this was paid off during the current year." And that was to the tune of $250,000 off the budget. "As a result, the opportunity to add childcare as a program and retain a custodian that was funded with ARP-ESR funds became available. The total cost of the childcare program was $132,000 for salary, fringes, and instruction. The custodian salary and fringes approximated $73,500. Mr. Adams detailed the composition of the line items for the director and business manager that included the buyback for 10 vacation days. He stated that this had not been accounted for previously, but in practice, it was being taken advantage of and should be in the budget. He mentioned that the teachers were currently in negotiations, and this budget included a 4% raise for the teachers. He mentioned that the health insurance was up 8.33, and since then, it has come in at a lower rate than that, which is fortunate. The last discussion included a plan to help assist the instructional aides, maintenance, and administrative assistant staff achieve raises that would hopefully prevent them from leaving frequently and aid in finding new employees. He indicated this budget would be on review for the month of December and would require approval on January the 2nd." So, in, last week at the vote, last week, yes, last Tuesday at the VOTEC meeting, there was considerable discussion. We had another 40-minute meeting regarding the budget, because the budget is up. And the budget is up essentially 10%, but with the $250,000 off the books, it makes it closer to 5%. But nonetheless, there were members at that last week's board meeting who were questioning a lot of the expenditures. And obviously, the big one was the $132,000 for a new program at VOTEC. And there were four people who were asking lots of questions. And in your packet, you have the minutes from that VOTEC meeting, and if you want to look at the discussion there, you can. I will say that I asked some questions as well, and one of the questions was, what is your, you know, long-range financial plan for the vocational technical school? And Mr. Adams pointed out that our contribution over the last two or three years has been a decrease. And I said, the reason it was a decrease was because we sent fewer kids than we had previously. And he never answered my question as to what the long-range plan for finances at the VOTEC was. So, I asked what the, what research had been done for the childcare, and Mario assured me that they had done research. And I said, where are these students going to come from? Are they internal? Are they, new students will be coming to VOTEC? He said, some of both. And one of the members asked if all of the courses at VOTEC were full. And I think the concern was that this new course would take students from other courses. So, we weren't exactly a bunch of happy campers last week. In the end, when we voted, the budget passed 7 to 2, and now it comes back to us to vote next week on that budget. So, if you have any questions, I would try to answer them, but it was, and I asked about the custodian. I said, $75,000, do we, do you need that custodian? You know, it was, it was a person who was added, paid with ARP money. Now, though ARP money is gone, do you need that person? They assured me they absolutely did need that person. So, it was, it's just a big question. There was a big increase for Mario. I did email Pat Adams and asked him to explain that increase, and he sent me a copy of his contract, and all of those increases are in that contract. So, at any rate, that's where the numbers go.
But I think when Lynn and I had talked that, you know, we were going to have this opportunity to share the concerns this evening, if you have specific concerns after looking through the specific budget and also reading the minutes that were provided, both from the December and January meeting, if you have questions, please email us so that we can get those answers prior to next Tuesday.
Yeah. And I do have quite a bit of data. Once people started to ask questions, we did get some information through our email about this course, this new childcare course that they are proposing. But it is very hard to get information. So, it took four people and two of them voting against this budget in order to get information that we probably should have been getting all along. And that's, that's the problem, is getting information. So, but, you know, if you have questions, please do ask.
Yeah, if you have questions, please, please let me know.
The one question I did have was on the, I noticed the custodian that you, that jumped out at me.
Mm-hmm.
And then the other thing was the aides. There's a big increase in the aides. Did they have a new contract?
They're working on it at this point in time.
Because it was like a $36,000 difference.
What, they're having a terrible time keeping people.
Yeah.
You understand all that. And what they are proposing was a lump sum to each of those aide.
Okay.
In order to.
Bring them current.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So, that is, that is, that was justification.
Those were the things that jumped, the new program, the custodian, and aides, that was the three things that jumped out at me.
It was, it was a difficult conversation, I will say that. And I have to say, you know, by asking for some of these answers, we have gotten more information last month than we've gotten in the whole of the year. And so, but I, Melanie Anderson from Valley Grove asked a lot of questions about enrollment and numbers. And you'll notice in the January minutes, there were questions about why the cosmetology program had been removed. And we were told that those students weren't going into cosmetology, so why were you running a program for them? But then, the question was, how many students now are going into their designated area and program? And if, and I do have that document, if anybody wants to see it, because there are lots of kids who are not going to their related area for work. Now, the good news is, in the column under "fully employed," a lot of those programs send kid, their graduates are all fully employed, but they're not in their related field. So, that's gonna be an interesting question for next time. You know, why did you do, cosmetology, they said, had 60 students in it when they started to disassemble that program. And they reduced it to one class instead of 30 kids. I don't know, it didn't, from the numbers, it didn't make sense. So, we'll continue to ask questions there.
So, the number that's in our packet for the 24-25 budget, does that have the lesser of the two, health insurance? Because you said it was budgeted with the higher number, but it came in under. Is it still the higher that's in that? That was.
I would think it would still be the higher number. I don't know.
Yeah, and that's fine. I just, but those costs are going up, so that makes perfect sense.
Yeah. They, it had 8.3 in here, 33, and I want to say that they said when it came in, it came in at almost half that, which, yes.
So, I didn't know if they updated these numbers to reflect that.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Kami, in the end, like next October, September, am I wrong that whatever adjustments along those lines, we would get reimbursed for.
We get a subsidy. They consolidate it. They do a consolidation.
We would get money back on any of those things that may occur. They don't bank that money.
Right, they do a reconciliation at the end of the year. And then we get, yeah.
And the other thing that does happen are grants, and they received a grant for equipment to the tune of $63,000. And usually, it is not paid out in a one lump sum, but comes in portions. So, they expect that they're gonna get another $30,000, and with that, they intend to replace their dump truck that they have down at VOTEC. And those, and someone asked, are grants in the budget? And they basically said no, because they don't know what they're going to be, so consequently, they, they don't, they aren't on paper.
And same with ours. I mean.
Yeah. That's most places do that.
Correct.
Only budget the ones you know.
Yeah, exactly. So, so that was, that was good news, so.
Okay.
Anyhow. Number two, recommendation to authorize the business manager to enter in an agreement with an electricity supplier company for the 24-25 school year.
And that's simply just to give Sean the authorization that if he finds a lower rate, to be able to move on that. So, both, he's looking at both electricity and natural gas. I would imagine that we'll have a very similar resolution in February to address national fuel, natural gas, sorry.
Going on to personnel, a recommendation to approve Rocket's online campus director job description. And you have that in your packet, so take a look at that if you will. C, Buildings and Grounds, recommendation to approve 2024 Engineering Services Agreement with St. Paul LeBron.
And this is just an open agreement. It's actually a renewal agreement with them. We did not, we had this on file last year with us, but we did not use it. It would be simply as a preventative that if we needed any engineering services, we would have the agreement signed with them. It is $80 per meeting. As I, as I mentioned before, we didn't use that. It's just a standing agreement in the event that we needed something.
Number two, recommendation to approve replacement of Titusville Middle School boiler. Josh, would you like to tell us about the boiler?
So, at the middle school, we have, well, the building was originally constructed for five boilers to heat that building. Over the past four years, that building's been operating on three boilers. Just because of the efficiency of the newer boilers that we've installed over the years, there hasn't been a requirement for that. Well, this year, when we went to fire up the boilers for this coming fall and winter, one of the original boilers in the building, the heat exchanger, had failed. So, I received some quotes to replace that heat exchanger in that boiler. The quote came back around $28,000 to replace the heat exchanger of a 23-year-old boiler. So, we decided to get proposals for, to replace the entire boiler to something that's more efficient. And that came back to $52,900, perfectly replaced, and which includes the flu and all the controls and everything for that unit. So, just seeking recommendations to replace that boiler to get it back to three, three of those boilers for WCC and that building for backup purposes.
When would the boiler be installed?
So, it's a six to eight week lead times. We'd be looking probably around the end of February at this point.
Okay. Any other questions?
This did come to building.
It did.
We discussed it, the headlines, so. Not recommended from Harvard, too.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Josh. Moving on to Instructional Student Services, the recommendation to reapprove the ARP-ESR Health and Safety Plan, version one, for the 23-24 school year.
So, I would just point out that we are simply reapproving our health and safety plan that was originally brought to the board in August, August 21st. We're not suggesting any changes. It is a requirement of the grant for receiving the American Rescue Plan funding. We will have to do this one additional time in July or August before our funding is expended at the end of September in 2024. So, if you've looked through that, we will ultimately, once it's board-approved, we will make it available on the website, as well as send that in to PDE that we've completed that requirement, but there are no changes in there. We continue to have options for students to learn online if they are unable to because of being sick or worried about being sick with COVID. Again, all of the mask mandates have been removed, and we would continue to review any recommendations that come from the CDC and determine how we would implement those. Physical distancing, hand washing, respiratory etiquette, cleaning and maintaining healthy facilities, including ventilation, which we addressed a lot of that with our work at the elementary buildings over the summer. Contact tracing, isolation, quarantining, and collaborating with our state and local health departments. And then continuing to work with our local partners, potentially for vaccinations and other recommendations that our local hospital would provide us. So, any questions with that? We didn't make any changes, and we'll continue to monitor that before we come up with a 24-25 version for the last requirement.
Moving on to Transportation and Food Services, we have the nutrition group report for November and December. I noticed, I didn't realize there was a supply chain problem with milk cartons. So, are we not?
We've been very fortunate, because we've not had any issues at all. It's not hit our area at all.
I wondered if we were not giving kids milk, or couldn't we pour it in a glass and let them share with Mr. Come when he dips his cookies in?
You're probably not allowed to do that.
Probably not. I was just hoping that maybe if there were no milk cartons, that we could at least give a glass of milk.
We were, we were very fortunate. I went to a meeting in, I think I went to a meeting in August, and DuBois had shared a concern with some supply chain issues with the, with the little milk cartons that it comes in. Immediately after that meeting, I went and talked with Melissa King at Nutrition, and they've had no issues. So, there wasn't a concern for our district and our supply.
Okay, good. Number two, recommendation to authorize administration to prepare and advertise a request for proposal for a food services management company for the 24-25 school year.
I will report.
You will report?
So, we are just about finalized with the creation of the request for proposal. If you recall, you know, the food service management company is a one-year agreement with the ability to renew for subsequent years. We are currently in our fifth year of that agreement, or the fourth and final review or renewal. So, we are preparing the documents that have to go out for bid. It is, because it is federally funded, it has to be approved by PDE. So, we anticipate that Sean will share that RFP with PDE tomorrow. PDE goes through the entire document, the whole bid process, to ensure that everything is compliant with the federal pieces and all of the dates and financial pieces of it. Once we get that back, then we must advertise that request for proposal for three weeks. It'll be advertised in two newspapers and as well as our website. We have a pre-bid meeting scheduled for February 20th. And that is really where we go through the bid document, as well as walk the potential bidders around to the district kitchens, so they can see what those look like, what equipment is in, you know, in those kitchens and areas. And then they also have the ability to submit questions. By the 20th, we have to provide those answers, no later than the 22nd of February. And then we're going to be doing our public bid opening on, I believe, the 7th of March. Sean, Mike, and I will review those, and then ultimately bring a recommendation to the board. We're hoping that we have a recommendation for the committee meeting on the 11th, and then vote on that agreement on the 18th. Because then beyond that March date, there's different things that we have to do in order to provide that to PDE and get things moving before our agreement expires, of course, at the end of June. Any questions with food service? Again, we're gonna continue with that request for proposal with the community eligibility provision, CEP, which does provide free breakfast and free lunch to all students.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Number three, recommendation to award van bid for the purchase of the district van.
So, we're working to replace. So we're, um, working to replace our district van that we've had for the better part of, I think they got it in two thousand twelve. They're, right now, when we, um, purchased it, it had thirty thousand miles on it. It's now up over one-twenty. Um, and it's having some end-of-life, um, issues, if you will. And we have a lot of different events that we take students to, whether it's athletically, academic activities, um, music activities between all the different festivals that we travel to for PMEA. And then on top of that, just different professional development that our teachers use for that. And what, um, what we've ultimately had to do when our van has not functioned, we've had to use or rent, uh, rent is probably not the right way to say it, reserve a van from Northwest Bus. And then, of course, we have to pay for that amount. So we're looking at two vans. We're looking at, um, we submitted a, um, bid where we were soliciting, um, bids for a Kia Carnival. It is an eight-passenger, seven plus the driver. That bid will be open on Wednesday. So we'll know if they, um, if we have any bidders and what that amount is for your review and approval next Tuesday. And then we're also looking to purchase a Ford Transit, which, um, if you've seen some of the more fancier, newer vans, it kinda looks like an Amazon delivery truck, but with windows. We're looking at one of those as well through state contract. Right now, that amount is sixty-eight thousand with a potential few, uh, a few additional outfit options. I know that Josh and Mike were getting some final details on what that would look like. And that is a ten-passenger, nine plus the driver. So we feel that both between the smaller, um, eight-passenger and the ten-passenger, we will use that within our district and not rely on Northwest Bus as much for different, uh, transportation needs.
How much was the Kia?
Josh, do you recall with the Kia, what we were expecting, and it's gonna come back in a bid?
Yeah, I understand.
It's between like thirty-seven and like forty-one.
Is what we had anticipated. Okay. Questions on that?
All right, just living in that world where you had to get transportation, why wouldn't we get two of the bigger ones?
Price?
Price, price is one, you know, but we feel that that's appropriate. Get, and we actually upped that when we put the bid out. It was either a seven or eight-passenger. And we believe that we can get an eight-passenger bid that's gonna come in, um, from a dealer. The problem is, there's just not a lot of vehicles. As soon as the vehicles really come onto the lot, they're gone. And so that's the better part of the last three years we've been trying to...
You'll get your money out of it, and then something again.
Absolutely.
Like, no matter which one you get.
Well, even if you look at our current van, we've certainly got our money out of that.
When you said, ah, money, huh?
Yep.
Where are our current van go for trade-in?
We're gonna probably try to get rid of that salad. You know, whether we put, we'll probably put it on munici bid, um, or talk with Northwest Bus.
So that's number three and four.
That was.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on to policy, we have a recommendation to approve the following school board policies for the second reading, and you see them listed there. And number two, the recommendation to reaffirm commitment to policy zero-one-one, Principles for Governance and Leadership, and...
I did include that in your packet. Um, and the reason why we felt that it was important to bring back is certainly talks about, um, the demeanor and how you should ma-manage yourself at our, you know, as a school board director. The other thing that we'll be able to do, especially with, you know, relatively three new, um, folks coming on, we'll, we'll count you in the new, is that ultimately, once we reaffirm that, we will sign our names to the poster that's displayed here. And we'll have that, you know, for you to sign again in February. And we'll display that, that we're all on the same page of what the expectations are.
Yeah, it's a good thing to review every once in a while, to read through it.
Yep.
We do not have anything under legislative. Under negotiations, we have that the negotiations committee met on January third, twenty-twenty-four to discuss the collective bargaining agreement with the Titusville Education Support Professionals Association.
And we do have upcoming meetings, um, already scheduled. And as we have those meetings, I'll just continue to put them under negotiations so that you'll know when we've met with that, um, specific group.
Information and proposals, letters and communications from non-school sources. Uh, there is a form at place, uh, that you need to fill out. And please return to Terry Kerr. And, um, if I'm right, in this pile someplace is the original one. Your, your form from last year, so all you need to do is, there it is.
Yep, and remember, you're filling this information out from twenty-twenty-three.
So you're, it lags one year there.
Yep.
Very good.
If you can, try to please bring that back next Tuesday. And you can give that to Terry. Or if you have any specific questions, let us know, and we'll help you. Even the new folks, Mark, Krista, um, and Jill, you would've had to complete this to be on the ballot. Right, sorry, five, sorry, some of you had to fill it out. Some maybe had to fill it out more than, than once.
Number two, PSBA required courses for newly elected and re-elected school dis-directors. If you remember the fun of, uh, that, it's back again, so...
So if you look up at the top, if your name is not on either side, you don't have to do anything. So Jim, Kevin, and Monica, disregard. But you can see on the left-hand side, Jill, Mark, and Krista. There's some options there for you. And then Lynn, Jack, and Carol, your information is over on the right-hand side of that. Um, I just wanted you to be aware that, first of all, the, the, you know, there's a lot of flexibility in this, in that PSBA has several different options for you. If you would like to attend in-person through PSBA, you can see that they do have a meeting on Wednesday. I know it's not, um, or, excuse me, on, it's Saturday, excuse me, um, over at Grove City Area School District. If you'd like to go in-person, there are some additional, um, ones in-person. You'll see those dates there. They're a little further away. They also offer virtual hosted dates. You can see those, um, there and, uh, with the agenda. As well as the IU Six is hosting in-person. They are different dates for the newly versus the, um, the re-elected. Um, and then there's a cost associated with that, um, along with dinner. Just depends on what your learning style is. If you'd like to learn in-person, fantastic, we'll work with you to get you registered. If you're okay learning online, you can do the virtual ones through PSBA. There is no cost. Um, and the other way that you can learn is through your PSBA account, where you would log on to your courses, and you can take those classes at your leisure. And we can, both Terry and I can help you get registered for those classes on your PSBA account. And then you just take them whenever you want. New, um, newly elected have to do five hours. And then after each course, you would print out your completion certificate. And then those re-elected, uh, board members need to complete three hours. Um, and we're willing to help you in any way we can, short of us sitting down and doing the class for you. We're telling you now because we need you to get, uh, have this completed by November.
So, is there a test at the end like there was last time?
I don't, a test at the end of these online classes?
Little quizzes.
There might be little quizzes.
Don't you?
I thought it gone before you, so, I got it gone before you.
You did.
She was faster. So, we just wanted to make sure you knew your options. And like I said, if you want to do them in-person, whether through PSBA or the IU and would like us to register you, um, please let us know.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Uh, information from the superintendent, staff, and board liaisons. We have the Riverview Intermediate Unit minutes. Kevin is not here. He was basking in the sunlight, so we'll move on. Benango Technology Center, we've talked about that. And again, if you have questions, please get in touch with us. School Safety Committee, minutes are there. Read through that, please. Cafeteria reports. We have newsletters from the ECLC and from Hightown. If you read the, um, Hightown newsletter, very interesting on absences. It says that, uh, this is the December one. Do the math. In K through twelve, you have thirteen years of school. Missing just one and a half days per month, times nine equals thirteen and a half days. Thirteen and a half days times thirteen years equals a hundred and seventy-five and a half days. Almost a whole year of school. Kind of shocking.
Eye-opening.
Yes, that's what it really was, so appreciated that. Twenty-twenty-four Board Committee and Liaison Assignments, you have that list.
I would just note that we did make one change from what we had shared in December is with regard to the Alumni Association. We had originally indicated Jim as the liaison. But after review of the Alumni Association bylaws, having a school district board member is not allowed to be a voting member of the board. So we have removed Jim as liaison, and Sean and I are taking on that role. So we will meet with Tamara either before, after, or attend the meeting and then report back to the, um, board if there's, uh, items that need to be shared. Tamara has been doing a great job of sharing with us, um, where the alumni stands and the different things that they are doing. Are you good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll get to come and visit with you.
It was an interesting conversation.
Sure.
Uh, next is the Yearbook Order Form. That's the, uh, same colored one. So please get that to Terry, if you will, fill that out, get it back to her.
The only thing I would add, sorry, Lynn, I didn't mean to, um, add in. But, um, with regard to graduation, if you're gonna attend graduation, we'd ask that you please mark that down. And then if you're going to participate in that, a need to order a gown that we give Mr. Smith adequate time to order that through Jostens. I believe that's who you order it through in plenty of time before the June seventh graduation ceremony.
Information and questions from board members. Anything else for the cause this evening?
Um, I would, sorry, well, there's one last thing, and it was at place. Is the, um, PSBA travel insurance. And that was right beyond your pink sheet there at place. One of the things, it's an option for you, um, the enrollment is due January thirtieth. Um, and it just, they sent us a reminder, and it says, if board members are enrolling only in the basic insurance, you don't need to fill out the form. That you're automatically enrolled in that PSB, uh, insurance and covered as a thank you as the board member. It would be really if you wanted additional coverage. So... It protects you... For traveling.
Okay. Are there any public comments at this point, this evening? Then, looking at advanced planning, future meeting dates. Please note that it, our meeting, our board meeting will be next Tuesday, uh, at seven here in this room. Buildings and Grounds will be Monday, February the twelfth at five-thirty in the Admin Office Boardroom. Our February, um, committee meeting is on the twelfth, Monday. And the, um, Policy Standing Committee will be Tuesday, February the twentieth. And our regular board meeting is also on Tuesday, February the twentieth. Another couple of Tuesday meetings there.
Yep.
Any questions? Then I believe we are adjourned. Thank you all for all your work. Appreciate that very much.